You all stand for the place of allegiance.
Place of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
These are my standing for the prayer. Pastor T. Ferguson from Shepherd of the Hills, please insert. Thank you.
Let us pray. O mighty God, the Bible teaches that we are to pray for all authority, that we may live peaceful and quiet lives. This evening we pray for our town council, since they make important decisions for our community. Or they know that their decisions won't please everyone because the issues are complex and the perspectives are diverse on these different issues. But guide them to do what is best for our town, so that we may live peaceful and quiet lives. We also pray for our state leaders and our national leaders, that you would guide and protect them. This we ask in your name. You are the divine authority and you are Lord of all. Amen.
Thank you Pastor T. Have a roll call please.
Mayor Cavanaugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeats?
President.
Mayor Elise?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Dickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hampton?
Councilmember Elkin?
Here.
Before I go to the minutes report, I just want to announce that item number three, which is on the consent agenda, is now moved to the regular, regular agenda items. That would be the first of the regular agenda items. So if anybody is here for that one, that will be moved to the regular agenda. And my first top of mention is for Customer Service Week. Whereas in nineteen ninety-two, the US Congress proclaimed Customer Service Week a nationally recognized event, celebrated annually during the first full week in October. And whereas Customer Service Week is devoted to recognizing the importance of customer service and honoring the people on the front lines of the service revolution. And whereas various federal, state, and local government officials throughout the country are taking this time to recognize, thank, and commend all customer service personnel for the dedicated service they provide to citizens. Whereas the town council would like to express its sincere thanks and appreciation for excellent service provided to the citizens of the town of Fountain Hills on a daily basis by the customer service representatives of the town. And whereas the town council recognizes and commends the customer service representatives for fulfilling the town's commitment to providing the highest and most efficient level of customer service. Now therefore, I Linda M. Cavanaugh, Mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, hereby proclaim the October first through October fifth, two thousand twelve, as Customer Service Week in Fountain Hills. And respectfully ask all citizens to join in expressing thanks for the outstanding work performed by the customer service representatives of the town throughout the year. In witness whereof, I have here on to set my hands and cast the official seal of the town of Fountain Hills, mayor of the town in Arizona, the twenty-seventh day of September, two thousand twelve. And now I will go to Julie.
Thank you Mayor. I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize all the customer service representatives who work for the town. As the mayor said, in nineteen ninety-two, the US Congress proclaimed Customer Service Week a nationally recognized event, celebrated annually during the first full week of October. We all consider ourselves customer service reps. But those pictures on the screen are just a few of the employees who serve our many citizens every day. They are the frontline representatives to each day greet and serve our citizens with a smile and an eagerness to assist. We celebrate their commitment each year during the first week in October. And we'd like to thank the mayor and the council for your support.
Thank you Julie. Second top of mention we have is for Fire Prevention Month. Whereas the town of Fountain Hills has committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our community. And whereas home fires killed more than twenty-six hundred people in the United States in two thousand ten, and fire departments in the United States responded to more than three hundred and sixty-nine thousand home fires. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. Whereas the town of Fountain Hills first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas town of Fountain Hills residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the two thousand twelve Fire Prevention Month theme, quote, "Have Two Ways Out," end quote, effectively serves to remind us to develop and practice home fire escape plans during Fire Prevention Month and year round. Now therefore, I Mayor Linda M. Cavanaugh, the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of October, two thousand twelve, as Fire Prevention Month and urge all residents to practice their home fire escape plan during Fire Protection Month, two thousand twelve, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the town's fire and emergency services. At this time, we'll go on to our call to the public. Do you have anything?
No ma'am.
Okay. All right, then we will move on to the consent agenda. First item, we have now only the two items. First is consideration of approving the town council meeting minutes from September eleventh and twentieth, two thousand twelve. And the second is consideration of approving a liquor license application submitted by William Lionel Paju, owner agent of Fountain Hills, L-2846, located at one six seven six six Parkview Avenue, Suite 103, Fountain Hills, Arizona. This is for a series fourteen licensed private club. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed?
Come on.
And a second please. Are there any speaker cards on this item?
No ma'am.
All right, then a roll call please.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Councilmember Elkin?
Aye.
Mayor Elise?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeats?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Cavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor Seven Zero?
Now we'll move on to the regular agenda items, and we'll start with that item number three, which is consideration of approving the amended strategic plan goals and operation priorities for fiscal year twelve thirteen.
Mayor Cavanaugh, members of the council. There are two issues. At the council meeting in September twentieth, council voted to amend the strategic goals. However, the amended strategic goals and operational priorities were not approved with the original motion. Therefore, the agenda item was placed on the next agenda to complete that action. Second part of that, if you would scroll down to I two in your packet that indicates the lower reliance on the statute, the state revenues by developing a locally controlled reliable funding source for infrastructure maintenance, that was, should have been removed from this document, as well as the bullet point right below it, which reads, "Create an infrastructure maintenance fund for facilities, parks, and fire, no roads." Would require initial cash infusion of five hundred thousand dollars, and annual construction of two hundred seventy-five thousand from the general fund. That was to be removed, and unfortunately, it was not for this document to be approved. So staff request that the council approve the strategic plan goals and operational priorities for fiscal year twelve thirteen, with an amendment to remove the bullet point under I two, as I discussed.
Thank you council, I have a motion to approve. And a second? Any speaker cards?
Who's the second?
You.
Thank you. He'll speak at time.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero?
Item number four is consideration of accepting and approval for placement of a sculpture titled, "More Than Words", and put in the centennial circle.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm going to do a presentation on the next three items, the four, five, and six, while I'm up here. So before you tonight are three items for your consideration of accepting and approving the placement of for inclusion in his town's public art collection. The first item is on the screen, it's More Than Words. The sculptor is Craig Todd of Greeley, Colorado. The bronze piece is valued at twenty thousand dollars, and it's being donated by Tony and Sally Axington, who are actually here with us this evening. The public art committee is recommending that the sculpture be placed in the centennial circle on one of the remaining vacant areas there. And the estimated annual insurance cost for this particular piece would be approximately eighty-six dollars a year. The next piece that we're considering tonight, that you're considering, is the Second Story View. It's a giraffe sculpture by Jeff Bates from Ferlita, Colorado. And the bronze piece, kind of bronze, looks like it's a couple of different things, is valued at thirty-seven hundred dollars. The piece is being purchased and donated by the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association. And the public art committee is recommending the sculpture be placed in Fountain Park, kind of near a tree, so it looks like the giraffe will be eating the leaves off the tree. The estimated annual insurance cost for this piece would be approximately sixteen dollars a year. The third piece on the agenda this evening is Emma's Garden, and the sculptor is Scott Stredbeck from Alpine, Utah. And the piece is valued at eleven thousand five hundred, but the negotiated price is seventy-five hundred. A family is donating five thousand dollars in remembrance of a local resident that passed away, and the balance of twenty-five hundred dollars is being requested to come from the Public Art Fund. There are sufficient funds in the Public Art Fund to cover this expense. And the Public Art Committee is recommending placement of this piece also at Fountain Park. And the estimated annual insurance cost to the town will be approximately fifty dollars. So those are the three pieces. And Sandy Thompson from the Public Art Committee is here to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
I just do have one comment. The giraffe is out of bounds.
Right.
All right, well, thanks Brian.
No problem.
We'll take them one at a time. Item number four is More Than Words. Can I have any motions?
Come on.
And a second?
Second.
Any speaker cards?
No ma'am.
All right, and council discussion on this piece?
Yeah, thank you. I don't have a question about this piece, but just in general, what would be the balance left for the public, in the Public Art Fund? Do you know?
I do not know that off the top of my head.
Sandy?
That is not coming out of the town's public art fund, it's coming out of FACA public art fund. Has nothing to do with the ninety-fourth time of the year.
Oh ma'am, maybe, I'm not talking about this particular item.
Sandy, can you call for the mic?
Yes.
That'd be great, thanks.
Thanks Sandy, how about the Emma's Garden one? I have a thing in general question.
Oh, okay, Emma's Garden is definitely coming out of the public Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association, Public Art Fund.
I'm confused, so the public art?
There is a one percent Public Art Fund that pays for insurance and maintenance and things like that. The money, the twenty-five hundred on Emma's Garden was, is being funded by the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association. We're all the same, Public Art Fund, but those monies are in our fund that we fundraise for.
Okay.
But they're not in public funds?
They're not public funds, no.
Okay, thanks. I was just reading what it says, just so I just wanted to be clarified, because it does say, there are sufficient funds in the Public Art Fund?
Meaning, meaning, yeah, meaning the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association.
Okay, okay. And then the other question I had, Mayor, was, do we, have we already had the first step? I know we kind of made a change where we were having you presented in two different steps. One was where we saw the art, and then the other one was where we placed it. So, and I know I wasn't physically here last time, so maybe we did, or has there been a change in that? Or maybe somebody could get back to me about that?
I do know that the art pictures were submitted to passing, and been timed for this meeting and before this meeting, so I would assume that he showed the council.
Okay, okay.
Okay, any other council discussion? Councilman Elkin?
Thank you. It's not often that we have the donors that come to the council meeting. We don't always have an opportunity to thank them in person. Mr. Axington, I want to thank you on behalf of the town of Fountain Hills and our residents. So I'm sure it'll be a sculpture that people will enjoy and appreciate for many, many years. Thank you for your generosity.
And I do want to point out that Sally is our first Fountain Hills resident. So she's been in town a long time.
Wow.
All right, then we'll get back to, is there any other council discussion on number four, More Than Words? Anything else? Then, all in favor of accepting this sculpture?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero?
All right, that's it, congratulations. The second one is, well, it's number five. It's the Second Story View, that's a very tall giraffe. Do we have a motion to accept this one?
Come on, second.
And any speaker cards?
No ma'am.
All right, council discussion? Anything? No? All right.
Yeah, hi, Mr. Ferguson.
Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero?
And we'll go on to number six, which is Emma's Garden, motion to accept?
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion, but I'd like to put some tagline in there to councilmember Dickey's point, because there always seems to be some misunderstanding of how the monies are used as specified that these funds are coming out of the Fountain Hills Civic Association's funding, not the town.
Brian, do you want to explain a little of that? There's a little confusion.
There is a little confusion, but according to the Agenda Action Form that you have marked, indicated that there's twenty-five hundred dollars, and this is Public Art Fund. We just need to clarify that it's the FACA Public Art Fund, so.
Let's just insert that.
Okay, so we just clarify that.
FACA Public Art Fund.
And in the piece, we'll clarify which fund.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
All right, then, and that's the form of a motion?
Second.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, any speaker cards on this item?
No ma'am.
No, okay, any other council discussions?
I just want to thank the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association for raising the funds. Thank you Sandy for all the good work that the committee does, and for, you know, beautifying our town with all the beautiful. Thank you.
I certainly missed being on that committee.
And the negotiating power is very mild.
Yeah.
Of course.
All right, then, council discussion is, is it? Good, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor Seven Zero?
All right, at this time, we're going on to item number seven, and I'm opening a public hearing. I just want to make you aware that we will be taking public comment during seven or eight. Okay, just so you're aware of when, if you want to speak on eight, we're going to be taking that during seven. All right, so number seven, public hearing related to ordinance twelve S-oh-four, and amendment to the zoning ordinance to amend that's in nineteen oh-five, public art requirement.
Thank you Mayor. The Building Safety Division is responsible for the initial collection of the public art piece or ensuring that an art piece is being provided. The requirement of public art contribution to be made at the time of occupancy permit approval for commercial, industrial, and multifamily development projects has proven to be problematic at times over the past few years. Building Division has had to hold back certificates of occupancy after a building has been constructed due to some applicants not having met that public art requirement. Tenants are occasionally allowed to occupy those completed spaces by property owners before they have certificates of occupancy. And this requirement has occasionally slipped through the cracks, and certificates of occupancy have been issued in error due to the current permit tracking, software's glitches. As the responsibility for collecting the public art donations rests with the Building Safety Division, they've requested that the ordinance be amended, so that the donations be made upfront rather than at the end of the process. If this amendment is approved, the administrative process to be followed will be very similar to the current process, except the public art donation will be made at the beginning rather than the end. A mechanism has been included in this proposal to allow for reimbursement of any donated funds for artwork or the artwork itself in the event the project fails or don't begin construction for some reason. And the Planning Commission voted to forward a recommendation to approve this Public Art Zoning Ordinance Amendment as presented, and staff also recommends approval of this ordinance amendment. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Excuse me, do you have any speaker cards on that?
No ma'am.
You don't, okay, so I will close the public hearing, and we will go on to number eight, which is consideration of ordinance twelve S-oh-four as just presented, and I will ask for a motion?
Come on.
And a discussion. And now we will have council discussion. Councilman Elkin?
Thank you. Could you explain just a little bit for folks that may not know what the public art contribution is, what percentage is, and how that's figured out?
Public art contribution is any time we have a commercial, industrial, or multifamily development proposal that comes to town and goes through the concept plan approval, which is basically a site plan approval through the Planning and Zoning Commission. There's a one percent donation requirement to the public art fund, and that one percent is based on the amount of the building permit. That fund is funded by that, and the council has control over what those funds are used for, which is public art. Generally, any public art donations that are made go through the Public Art Committee for recommendations that come to council, just like what happened earlier tonight.
Mayor, as I understand, there's an alternative to making that contribution, is that correct?
Yes, they can either make the one percent donation in cash, or they can provide a public art piece, either on their own site or on public property, in an amount at or above the, what would have been cash amount.
And if you could explain, if a builder were to opt to have a piece on their site as opposed to making a cash contribution, how would that be affected as far as when they had to have this piece completed? Would it be at the time they got the permit that they had to have the piece? Or would it be at completion prior to the CO?
Currently, it is, prior to the certificate of occupancy being issued, it would have to be either contracted or in place.
So under the current, as far as an art piece, if they opted for an art piece, would that have to be, and it couldn't be in place at the time before, correct? I'm just trying to.
Before the building permit, you mean?
Yeah.
No, we would require them that they would contract it. They would have to work with the Public Art Committee to get it under contract, and then we would go ahead and issue the building permit.
And when you say under contract, would that be already paid for?
With the artist, or whatever was working out. They could show us a receipt, whatever, whatever that process ends up being, so that we have adequate proof that the public art piece is going to be donated, is going to be provided.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm just trying. Mayor, defer to councilmember Brown, because he's a bit more familiar.
All right, councilman Brown.
Thank you Mayor. Bob, there's one little slip there. You said it was one percent of the price of the permit, when in fact, it's one percent of the valuation of the building.
Building permit, yeah.
Not the building permit, but the valuation of the building. So if the building is valued at a million dollars, it's one percent of a million dollars, not one percent of the price of the permit.
It was one, I believe it's one percent of the price of the building permit. The building permit is based on the value of the construction.
That's the way it was supposed to be written, but I thought when we finally wrote the ordinance, it was written out as one percent of the valuation of the building. Is that not correct? Am I misreading that?
It's based on one percent of the valuation of the building permit. It's just kind of a, the building permit is based on the value of the building.
Correct.
What's the value on the permit?
It's actually the value of construction.
What it says in the statute here is, one percent of the cost of the building construct, excuse me, not to read the full sub-paragraph. Exterior public art of an appraised or invoiced value equal to or greater than one percent of the cost of building construction and associated site work and signage, water features using recycled water are preferred.
The development cost.
Yeah.
But it's the value of the, the cost of the building construction and an associated site work and signage.
Yeah, it's not the final value of the building, it's the building construction.
Don't get that much money, right?
It's not very big, no.
And at any time that this stops, they can get their money back, if they put the money in, right? It's always refundable? At any, is there at any point where it's not refundable?
Once they start construction of the project, then it's not refundable.
Okay, but at that point, whatever happens, they can, they can get a refund, okay. Is there any other?
I have a comment, thank you. Bob, as you clarified, we have two options for donating. One is cash and/or contractual arrangement with our group to purchase a piece, a sculpture piece. What percentage would you say, if in your experience, or maybe Sandy has the answer to this question, were, would be in cash versus actually the purchase of the statue or the?
The largest majority of the donations are in cash. I want to say at least, it's well over eighty percent. The largest majority are cash donations.
How would this deal with the scenario whereby, as the mayor has queried you, if someone makes a cash donation with a building permit with all intentions of building a building, something goes sideways, they get reimbursed in cash. Now what happens if they've contracted for a sculptural piece, and they have this sculptural piece, and the building goes sideways? They now have a piece of sculpture. Would that see how this would operate? Because I see that kind of as a glitch. You get what I'm saying, on the back end, there was an insurance, but that wouldn't necessarily be the case. So I'm not sure contractually, if there's something we could tweak with the arts group, because once again, on the front end, we're basically saying at the time of the building committee, that you're paying cash, at the opposition of the building committee, you're paying cash and/or you're making arrangements contractually to have an artist consigned to do a piece of artwork. Well, if things fall through, exchanging the cash is easy to deal with. But if you have this piece of sculpture, what happens in that case? Has that been considered?
Do they actually go through with purchasing something? Maybe Sandy can answer these questions, I think. Yeah.
Exactly.
In the past, the only construction projects that the group, whether it's Peterson Group or whomever, purchased were large amounts of money. For example, the Peterson Group was at Bassett's, and they purchased the two boroughs, friend of Lena. And they were, of course, it was going through when they signed on the dotted line. Obviously, they were going to do that project. The smaller ones, like Bob was talking about, are, you know, the three thousand, five thousand dollar projects that we may get, you know, fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, or whatever. And they do not get sculptures. They strictly pay the cash, and like Henry said, that would be easy to deal with. I don't think you're going to find a company that, you know, going to pay for construction costs, pay for the building permit in a huge amount, that he wants a sculpture. He's certainly going to go through with it, I'd have to see, whereas they wouldn't. I mean, if they've gone, if they've gone to all that trouble to pick out a sculpture. Are you going to actually go out, and I believe this is what we're discussing, are you actually going to go out and pick a piece, and, you know, put a down payment on? Or do before, you know, it's definite that this project is going through? Or are you going to?
you know, it's definite that this, a project is going through, or are you going to be waiting till actually construction starts?
Well, in the past, it wasn't a problem for us because it was after the fact. In this case, uh, we would work with the, with the, um, the project and see what they wanted. Now, whether we would ask for a down payment at that time, this is something our public art, our committee would have to discuss, um, to see that new ruling, so I couldn't answer that without talking to my committee.
Mayor. Um, I, I was sitting on planning and zoning when we had this discussion and crafted this. Um, to my recollection, I don't think you'd go out and physically buy the piece yet, you would contract to buy the piece, and you're not going to get the C of O until, okay, you're going down your checklist of inspection, where's your art? Well, we're going to put it there, well, until you get it, I'm like, you can't get your C of O. But it would issue the permit, in their case, you know, just by showing, here's my down payment, and now it's still cash. But to your point, Henry, you're absolutely right. Theoretically, someone could go buy a piece of art and say, here's the art, I'm going to put it over there, but if the, uh, project doesn't come to fruition, theoretically, you've got a piece of art. But we were, we were discussing more so the what ifs of, okay, if the project doesn't come to fruition, what happens to that money if you paid the one percent and we achieved that? But remember, the end goal is to get the C of O, you can't get the C of O until you met that criteria. Yes, Mayor, I mean, um, uh, thank you for that clarification, I, I understand that. Um, what, what concerns me is that in, in our new scenario, what staff is basically saying is we want to move this to the front end of the process, and as defined, the front end of the process is that committee. So, we're talking commercial, you know, we have a squad act plan, let's say a developer, well, you know how that goes on the avenue. We have a developer come in, and they, they put money down, they purchase, they have their permit, uh, it could be a commercial project, Sandy, it could be as big as Bassett's, it could be huge, it could be a really large piece of artwork, and they're contracting at the time of the permit, and then the, 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 uh, the plans of the development goes south. So, that's, that's what I'm concerned of, because it's very possible that we would be in that situation, and I'm not sure contractually how we would deal with that unless there was something in the contract with the Arts Group that clarified in that event. And once again, I want to litigate up here, I'm not a lawyer, but we have one.
Bob, do you have any clarification on that?
In order to issue the building permit under what we're proposing, they would have to have some sort of evidence that they had been working with the Public Art Committee, and that they were either under contract or had a piece of art ready to install. Uh, if they are under contract, then we would have to assume that they, they actually were smart enough to, to make their contract so that they could back out of it if they decided to back out of the whole property. Otherwise, yeah, they're going to own a piece of art. I, I don't know how we're going to get around that. They'll, they'll own a piece of art. No, if they, if, if their project doesn't go through, they would own it.
So, why couldn't we do something like, like it would be, like an escrow account, but some sort of a holding account, where those funds would stay until such time as some, something was finalized? That they either got their building permit, or, or in the case where they were going to get it themselves, they'd take these funds and put it into this holding account until such time as they were ready to proceed. That way, they wouldn't end up with the art, or it was no place to put it.
I, I don't really see the town really being involved in that contract. Uh, they would have a contract with the artist or, or through the, uh, Public Art Committee, but the town isn't going to be responsible for that contract, other than to say, you showed us that you're going to be providing that, so now you can have your building permit. It has to be provided by the time you get your occupancy permit.
Well, when they pay their funds, who do they actually write the check to?
The, the, the funds alone will go into a separate account, and they'll be, they will be on hold until the project is done, just in case we have to reimburse it if it doesn't go through.
Then that could work on both.
Well, this, uh, it's public, it's public art, are you actually, I know from being on Public Art that once you get an artist started on a piece, there's no going back from that. So, did you have intentions of having them start something, or just, you know, waiting till the project actually starts? Even though you have an agreement that they're going to purchase the piece, and they look in your wish book, or however they do it, they pick out a piece, and then you wait till the construction actually starts, and then once that happens, you, you have the contract where you would have the funds available, and then you would go ahead and do it? Does that make any sense to you?
In the, in the past, they had, obviously, they had until, uh, the, uh, certificate of occupancy, so they had time. So, under this new procedure, it's something new, so we would have to look at that, either with the town, with you, or, or, and our, our board, to see what we would do in that case. Because like you say, if we put something under contract, this is what they want, have the artist start to make it, we are committed, uh, to buy that piece. Uh, so, obviously, I would say it wouldn't be started until we were sure that the, uh, the group or the developer was going to go through with the. So, how about if we kept those items only, when they want their own piece of art, on, on the back burner, the way it is today, and have those not, you know, those still under certificate of occupancy?
Well, maybe there's our details that you need to work out before we can actually go through with this thing, because it seems like.
Well, see, this is new to me.
That you have to go back to the Public Art, and, and you've got to discuss this event since it wasn't already brought up.
Well, I didn't even know this was on the agenda, so this is something totally new to Public Art. We're, we're totally in favor of it, but, uh, it is something that, uh, we didn't know about.
Okay, let's, uh, go to, um, Councilwoman Dickie.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, um, would that be any different than if they had contracts with someone who's going to do drywall, or electrical, or anything like that? When you just said we would have nothing to do with that, uh, with the art, it almost seems it would just be something like that. I mean, they would have probably contracts with other items to build, and then if this thing fell through, then so be it, and the art would probably go to the wayside also. Couldn't it be just considered part of the project?
Right, if, if they propose to provide a public art piece, the town doesn't, doesn't own any money, because they're, they're buying the art. It's, the town isn't involved in that contract.
And just, um?
I mean, we, we will be getting that as a public art piece, but it's not something that we're buying.
Right, and Mayor, um, if they decided that they wanted to do that, instead of giving the cash, which they think is, is easily solved as we were just talking, then is there a time limit? I mean, they can have a contract, but they will work that contract out themselves, basically saying, but if it didn't go south, you know, all bets off, kind of a thing. So, I guess I don't see it as different as anything else, they might line up in order to put the building or the project together, if it falls off, and everything falls off. And I don't know why we would have to be involved with that.
Okay, Councilman Brown?
So, Bob, let's walk through this. I'm going to come up to the counter, and I'm going to buy a permit to build, construct the building, and the value is a million dollars, so I'm going to owe you ten thousand dollars, and that's, that's the one percent. And I'm going to buy the permit and hand you ten thousand dollars. Does that go in, that ten thousand dollars goes into a town account at that time?
Correct.
Okay? Even, even if they, even if I want to supply my own piece of art, as they did for the Bosses Center, why don't we just go ahead and take that ten thousand dollars and put it in that account, and let them pick the piece of art, let the construction start, but don't release that money until a certificate of occupancy? At that time, they could buy the art, or, or start the construction of the art, and then there was no, the, the town would still be in control of that money, so if they didn't start the project, as the fear might be, we would have it to reimburse them.
Okay, but that just puts us back to the C of O again.
No, but it's just for the people, just for the people that want to supply their own art. And, and I think the concern is that the man comes, that I want to, I would like to construct the building, and you've got my ten thousand dollars, I get two weeks into it and shut the project off. You still have the ten thousand dollars, which the town should have. It's not the town's fault, or the, the art's fault, that we have the ten thousand dollars at that time.
You're almost treating it like a bond.
However you would like to call it. But I'm just saying, opposed to waiting, worrying about, um, whether they have the money at the end of the project to pay for the art, collect it up front.
That's as long, that puts us back in the picture again, as opposed to what Councilwoman Dickie is saying, that whether it be a contract between the Public Art and whoever's doing the construction, so I guess that's two ways how it goes. Ow, we hear from our lawyer.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, uh, if, if I might add, I think that the, the change in the ordinance that's been in front of you tonight, uh, addresses both of those scenarios. You've got scenario one, which is, I'm a developer and builder, and I don't want to have to deal with supplying a piece of art, so I just write a check. And the way it's written, the change is, is that if two weeks later, Count, Councilmember Brown, could take your example, I've gotten my permit, I've paid the ten thousand dollars, two weeks later, deal falls through, I have not started construction, we refund the money, and that's the cha- that's the change. If, on the other hand, I'm an art connoisseur and developer, and I choose to, I want to work with the Public Art Committee to supply a piece of art, I, at the counter, when I pay my building permit fee, supply a contract, which has in it a timeframe by which I tell the artist, okay, start to make it, shows it to the people at the, the counter, and the staff takes a look at it and says, okay, you're under contract to supply a piece of art. Um, so we're going to accept that. And so, that sort of builds in some lead time for when the art actually gets started, so that the developer is secure that, okay, I'm not going to be out the money in order to get a piece of art that I don't necessarily want on a site that I'm not going to develop. And then if the, the project falls through, the developers then can talk to the artist and say, okay, we're done. Here's the walk away fee, or whatever it is that they've negotiated, because I told you artists to hold off on starting until I give you the go ahead to start. So, those are the two scenarios, and I think that's what the ordinance addresses. It, it addresses both of those scenarios, and we don't get, as a town, don't get involved in the contract between the developer and the artist, at all. If they want to supply art, they have to deal with sort of all that timing, and like, uh, Councilmember, uh, Yates said, uh, they won't get their C of O until they actually have the physical piece of art, um, on the site. And then you can work about where it's going to be and that kind of thing, but then that goes all the way to the end, and it's the developers who are dealing with the timing. But the change in the ordinance provides for, okay, we have evidence of that, we either have money or evidence that we're going to have a piece of art at the front end, instead of at the back end.
Okay, so the ordinance, as written as it's presented, covers both?
Yes.
Okay, and, was there, I should have gone to you first. Yes, Councilman Elkin.
I, I think what we're, I think what we're, we're still to ask so far is, how many buildings, Bob, are there in town right now that don't have a C O O, C of O issued because of failure to contribute the one percent for the public art fund?
Uh, one that I know of.
Okay, one. And then, how many times has a C of O been issued by staff before collecting that one percent? Quite.
Off the top of my head, I'm, I'm going to say two or three.
And that's over the course of, how long has it been?
We adopted this in oh nine, I believe, so, since then.
So, we've got two or three that have fallen, and I think that's probably something that can be better addressed as far as staff, or software, training, whatever it may be. I mean, if there was a huge problem, I mean, you're just saying there's ten, twenty, thirty of them that, that this is happening, and that we have many buildings in town that don't have their C of O because of failure to contribute the one percent, and it doesn't sound to me like this is a significant problem here. I mean, and why are we making, I mean, that's the question to me, why are we making this change in putting this additional responsibility on the developers and the builders?
My understanding is because the Building Safety Division actually collects the funds, and they're, they have to log them in, or whatever, and if, you can make it in our software now, you can make it a prerequisite of issuing the building permit. But for whatever reason, the software will not let us make it a prerequisite of issuing the occupancy permit. So, there's a possibility that if a project goes over a couple of years, they forget that it didn't pay its public art fee, or whatever happens. And that's what they're saying, is it's easier for them, I guess administratively, to put it up on the front.
It sounds more like it's something that, administratively, that some steps can be put in place as opposed to changing the entire town code and requiring builders to pay this one percent up front, or getting under contract for a project now. And one, one other thing that I wanted to ask, do all of the contracts, if somebody wants to have a piece of art put in, and they're going to buy it, they have to go through the Public Art Committee to purchase it?
They have to negotiate whatever piece it's going to be and the value of it.
They need to get approval as far as the piece and perhaps the placement, but ultimately, if I were building a building, and I wanted to contract the, contact the artist directly and go under contract with them, I could do that, but I'd still have to get approval for the piece, ultimately.
Yeah.
I mean, I could, as individually, I can contract with them to build that piece for me, as long as it's been approved by the Public Art Committee, and it's the one percent of the total value of the building, or whatever the statute or the protocol.
That's my understanding.
As long as it meets public arts requirements.
Sure, see.
Right, has to be.
Public Art Committee will send us a letter telling us.
Yeah.
So, I could purchase a piece of art or be under contract to purchase a piece of art with an artist who starts it, and then decides, or the, the funding falls through, and then I'm, I'm still under contract to pay for that, because I had to do that at the front end as opposed to later on, perhaps in the project.
Councilman Yates?
My only other thought here is that regardless of whether you're deciding to buy your own art, have the art made, everybody pays the one percent, and then it's, the one percent's released at one side or the other. So, that way, if I'm going to give my, my own art, and I contract, hey, the town's holding my, my art fund and so on to the contract, now it's still ba- based up to the developer and the art people to make that deal happen, and they'll, they'll get that one percent released at C of O. But that way, it's uniform, and we don't have to worry about what Henry's saying about, well, what if the, they show you a contract, but they never really get the art, and then nobody's there to follow up? If we collect everyone's one percent, because that's the minimum anyway, we release it either to the Public Art Fund upon C of O, or back to the developer, in this case, to the artist. That way, it's uniform, it's clean, you don't have to worry about any. You don't have to worry about, well, what kind of art did you get? You don't have to worry about any of that. True to the thought.
So, you're saying just deal in cash, and hold the cash until?
No matter what, the developer is ready to come up to, to get a permit by putting up, up your fee, all right, you're going to have to pay a one percent art fee. Well, wait a second, what is this? Well, either you go buy your own art, and we'll give it back to you when you tell us that you got it at C of O, or we, it goes in there, but regardless, they don't have to worry about it, we don't have to worry about it, it's uniform, everybody gets one percent art fee, they're required to get a art, a piece of art that size anyway. So, in essence, it's almost like a bond, but that way, it's clean, it's uniform, and we don't have to worry about all these different scenarios. Collect it all up front, but, but now, the onus is now on the developer and the art fund, all due respect, to, to prove that you bought the art, otherwise it goes to the, to the town's art fee.
Yes, Councilwoman Dickie.
Thank you. Um, the only problem to me with that is that there's, they may be able to get art that's, um, a better, like, more than the one percent. They may have, they may have people in their family, or they may have, uh, you know, you know, the way you were just talking about Jerry, and how he can get prices, so I feel like we're, and, and what if they don't ask you to keep cash right then, or, it, it sounds like a hard, more of a hardship, maybe, and that they might be able to come up with, with something that would even be worth more than the one percent? And, you know, art is very, it's not like something you really put your finger on, so I'm a little uncomfortable with that as being a requirement, just to get started, you know, that's the task.
You need to remember that these are commercial or industrial developments, these are not your standard household development. This is a, this is a commercial development proposal, um, and there's no requirement that you stay to that level. If you gave us ten thousand dollars, and it was in that fund, and you wanted to provide a twenty thousand dollar art piece, that's fine, you could still get your ten thousand dollars back.
Mayor.
Right, okay.
Hello.
Yes, Councilwoman Dickie.
I, um, I, I feel like I should apologize to you for bringing this up to begin with, however, and I, and I respect what our attorney says, but when I read the ordinance as written, and I know the experience of commercial developments in this town, you know, it's such a large commercial development, and Jerry's trumping at the bit, and, um, I just see all this unnecessary stuff transpiring, and it's my understanding in reading the ordinance and speaking with staff, this, um, revision in the ordinance was to simplify things. And frankly, if there's anyone that understands what we're even talking about, you know, that's, and it's become more, more complicated. Um, and at a minimum, the notion of tabling has come to mind until we codify some of this in, in our, in our, in our ordinance itself. I mean, I understand that, as our attorney said, we'll be, there's a contract happening over there, but this, this agreement starts with us, the town, county, and health, and if this goes south, um, and there's, there's-
And if this goes south, um, and there's, there's a contract out there. You know, we, we've had, um, large commercial developments proposed on the south side of the avenue that had been in queue for, for six months. And what happened, that's a large sum of money, that's a contract, and you guys are shopping, and it's a piece of art, and all of a sudden, it goes south. So, I really think, um, I, I'd like to make a motion to table, go back to the drawing board, take a closer look at this, and at a minimum, if we're gonna stick with our ordinance as written, we need to codify some of this language, uh, to prevent, um, um, prevent some issues here. That's my thought.
I think besides, um, in seconds, okay. No discussion on that motion. I think besides simplifying it for the staff, this was also request of public art because of a few people that somehow switched away without paying the public art. And, and, I mean, it could be just a few because we haven't had a lot of construction, but, you know, that could increase if construction increases. But I believe that's why public art asked for the change, because they did lose, um, some of, some of the, um, some, some of the buildings. Even though it was only a few, there was still some that they lost. And I think one went ahead and did its own and that wasn't approved. That was another problem. All right, so there's a, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion further on that?
Mayor Cavill, I'm with the council, I'm, I'm a little confused on what direction you're actually giving staff. What, what do you want us to do other than what's already in front of you? How do you want us to, how do you want this to be retooled?
I think, I think maybe this, it's gonna go back to public art too, because I think they really need to, there's a lot of issues here that public art probably hasn't considered. And maybe this should go back to public art, since there are the ones that initially, besides staff wanting to, um, you know, you want to do-
Madam Mayor?
Mm-hmm, yeah, you didn't even know it was on the agenda, so maybe you should go back and discuss this with your committee. Um, since Jerry's probably more aware than any of us about how this works. Okay, is there any other discussion, Councilwoman Yates?
I don't know if it's necessarily a public art, but a question for our town attorney. How would we make this from a matter of parliamentary procedure that we're basically asking for this ambiguity to be clarified? So, is it a table or is it a, a, a direction? Do we act on it?
Um, well, from a point of, of procedure, you have a current motion on the floor, um, to table it. If the intent there is to table the item that's in front of you, um, that then is direction to bring back a new ordinance to the council after all of the input that's been provided. So, the action would be to table the specific amendments that, that is in front of you tonight. Then, obviously, staff will take all this input, work with the various interested parties, and if necessary, revise the ordinance and then bring it back through the process. It will have to come back all the way through the process, um, a revised ordinance in order to, um, bring it back to you for consideration and action. So, that's, that's the motion that is on the floor right now, that's what it would do.
Is that, we don't have to give direction within the motion?
No, okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? And then, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor Seven Zero?
Thanks, Bob.
All right, on to the next public hearing. I'll open the public hearing for item number nine. And I will remind you that just like in the last, uh, public hearing, we'll take public input for ten in nine. So, public hearing, and number nine is relating to ordinance twelve dash oh six and amendments to the zoning ordinance to amend chapters two, five, nine, ten, eleven, fifteen, and eighteen.
Bob? Thank you, Mayor. Numerous temporary use permit regulations reside in eight separate ordinance sections of seven different chapters in the zoning ordinance. And they occasionally duplicate other permit requirements and create additional unnecessary and time-consuming procedures. Seven of those sections are being recommended for amendments under this proposal. Section two point zero three, temporary use permits. The amendments change the temporary use permit issuance into an administrative process that will no longer require a minimum ten day wait and won't require a button notification. However, the provisions for appeals, if there are any, will still go to council. Section five point one six deals with temporary carnivals, circuses, revivals, rodeos, slot meets, outdoor retail sales and similar activities. This section is being amended to eliminate the requirement for temporary use permits for these uses because a temporary use permit is duplicative. Major events of this type will still be required to obtain their special event permit. Outdoor retail sales, sidewalk sales and similar activities, which are already covered under the individual zoning district regulations in districts where retail is permitted, as well as being covered under encroachment permit processes when necessary, will no longer be required to go through a temporary use permit as well. Section five point two one, temporary construction and storage within a public right of way. These activities are already covered under the building permit process or the encroachment permit process, whichever is applicable. So, would not be required to go through the duplicative temporary use permit process as well. Sections nine point zero three, ten zero three, eleven zero four, and fifteen zero three are the individual open space and residential zoning districts, sections of the ordinance. And for those districts, administrative temporary use permits would still be required. We're also adding the requirement that daycare centers in those areas have business licenses. We're adding that model homes will be required to provide off-street parking. And master planned community sales centers may now be in any size development rather than those developments with two hundred acres or more. Now, attorney, town attorney has advised that this particular change needs to be specifically noted to you because it's, it could be potentially a significant policy change. The rationale, uh, is two hundred acres versus, uh, no minimum acreage. And the rationale for this change is that there are no more two hundred acre parcels left in town. Uh, even Hellmann's Parcels are all smaller than two hundred acres. Uh, and section eighteen point zero four, uses subject to temporary use permits in the T C C dis, D district, which is the downtown area. There are no changes being proposed in that district. Uh, we're just noting it that that is one section that talks about temporary use permits. Push cars are currently the only thing that needs a temporary use permit in the downtown area and those would still be required to get administrative temporary use permits. Uh, as a quick recap, the requirement to get event-related temporary use permits would be eliminated. They'd still have to get their special event permit. Outdoor retail sales and sidewalk sales, et cetera, no longer require temporary use permits. Activities in, uh, right of ways or easements would still be dealt with through building and, and/or encroachment permits. Uh, temporary use permits that remain in the residential areas would still be reviewed and processed administratively, and any appeals would still go to town council. These proposed changes are expected to significantly reduce the time and expenses involved in acquiring, administering, administering these permits. Planning and zoning commission voided a forward recommendation to approve this ordinance revision, and staff also recommends approval. Thank you.
So, Bob, daycare centers were never required to have a business license before this?
They're supposed to have a business license, but in other districts, that's specifically called out, so we added that section as well in this, under temporary use permits in those, in residential areas.
Okay, but most of this is just consolidating, uh, the same that was in different sections and-
It's eliminating dup, duplicative processes.
Okay, all right, um, do we have any speaker parts?
No, Mayor.
No? Okay, um, then I will close the public hearing and go on to ten. I closed the public hearing and we'll go on to ten, which is consideration of ordinance twelve dash oh six, that's just as I said, can I have a motion, please? A motion and a second?
Right.
And then we'll have council discussion on the, this is, and Councilman Henson?
Just very quickly, uh, anytime we can make government smaller is a good thing. And simplifying this and getting rid of the, the two requirements of special event request and temporary use permit. You know, when we're trying to encourage events, this, this will be helpful for that. So, um, I appreciate the planning and zoning commission and staff bringing this forward.
And you feel that everything, all of these can be handled administratively effectively?
The ones that are left to be handled could usually be handled administratively, yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor Seven Zero? Okay, then, uh, we have nothing further to report on the agenda, so we'll go for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
And a second?
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.